She elects to run that, she has to be sworn in according to Michigan.
Okay.
Can you repeat after me?
Sure.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Trustee.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of the Trustee.
In and for the Township of Casco.
In and for the Township of Casco.
County of St. Clair.
County of St. Clair.
And State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
There you go.
All right.
Right there, okay. Oh, I sent it over here.
Yep.
Mommy got elected. All right.
You need to see a good amount of chicken scratch up there. It's our guy forever. There you go.
You got your list.
All right, the first thing on the ballot is our consent agenda. Very questions on the minutes. The financial report or the payment of bills?
You have to amend the agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize for that. We have two items, and the reason that last one won because sometimes the DNR wants, when bills are paid, sometimes they require.
Well, that's over anyway. He said it was 200 and something, it's 550. That's fine. It needs to be on there.
All right, so we have two items to add to the agenda. One is U. Three U is Resolution 2219, Casco Township, W. B. R. Card. Paying Sparks Grant Application Assistance. And three V is for Pam Blau's Sparks Grant Application Assistance. So.
I have another question. You put the holidays schedule as FYI, do you think the agenda is an action item?
Yes, it is. Casco Township.
The holiday. The holiday schedule.
They're closed.
Oh, I think it is FYI.
Because we voted on it last year.
Oh, we did. Okay. Well, yeah, that is.
So I don't know if that needs to be voted on or not.
We started to know how to do it.
Yeah, okay, but UV.
WW.
W is Casco Township. Okay. Casco Township. Okay. All right, we have the three additions. Okay, you, your motion stands?
Yes.
Okay, you have support? Okay, we have a motion to accept the amended agenda with the three items. Anything else? All in favor?
Hello.
Hi.
Adam, yes, we roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Because we're about to vote.
Gotcha.
Anderson, yes.
Steven, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. The rest of the consent agenda, the meeting minutes for the Monday first, the financial report or payment of bills?
I have a question on the bills.
Sure.
I think that.
We just voted on it.
Pardon?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that the zoning board met, I mean, the zoning board met in October, and I don't think the payments are. It's possible you didn't get the sign and sheet, but I don't think they're here.
They were done here in October.
Pardon?
They were done here in October.
There were.
The happy underaction.
There were one before that, no, that was made, and then there was another one after that.
We can look into it. In, oh, okay. We can look into it.
There's a special meeting prior to the October meeting.
Then we didn't get the same. Yeah, I didn't get the sign and sheet.
Yeah, I'll look at my office.
Okay. I'll read them again.
I used to turn them in, but I don't anymore.
Do, do.
It isn't actually October.
Yeah, I'll look in the, I'll look down there. Okay. Yeah, I messed up because I thought we were just doing it, so we're gonna, well, I have to motion for two of us. Okay. For, okay, this will be for the entire consent agenda. A motion to accept.
We do that.
That's what you were hearing.
All right.
Are we looking for support? Is that what?
Yeah, we are, yeah, we're all, I don't know if that was from the consent.
Yeah, excuse me, I lost my situation. Where is it? Okay. Citizen, we have citizens comment. This is for any individual who would like to comment anything not on the agenda. On you guys? All right.
Oh, that's controversy.
All right. Okay, now we have a guest from United Way of St. Clair County. Who's gonna talk a lot of, would you like to come up?
Yes, sure can, yes. So I'm Sharon Wotan, I'm the co-chair for this year's United Way campaign in St. Clair County, and we're asking each of the municipalities within St. Clair County to do a proclamation calling December United Way Month. And we are doing that because we want to make sure that everyone's aware that the dollars that are raised for United Way help everyone in St. Clair County throughout the next year. Our goal this year is 1.1 million dollars, we're about 32% there. We're still doing a campaign meeting, so if anybody in your community is still wanting to have us come in to do a campaign meeting, we can do that, and it's also great to inform residents about what services United Way uncovers. So again, we think of December as when people are in need because it's the holidays, but really the need is every day all year round. So I appreciate you having us, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have this here. They provided a proclamation designated in December 2022 as United Way of St. Clair County Month. Okay. Where United Way St. Clair County partners with community in the meeting of the needs of people in Casco Township, and whereas United Way of St. Clair County serves the people of Casco Township through its support of 26 organizations which seek to meet the needs of the people in our community, and whereas these organizations support United Way of St. Clair County directly connected with, connected Casco Township residents with 53 resources last year indirectly and many more, and whereas monies contribute to the United Way of St. Clair County by residents and businesses staying in St. Clair County and are expended under direction of the Board Director made up of local volunteers, and whereas United Way of St. Clair County provides the most efficient utilization of fundraising efforts by assessing and responding to indicators of local community needs. Therefore, let it be resolved that the St. Clair County Township has designated the month of December in the year 2022 as United Way of St. Clair County Month in Casco Township, and let it be further resolved that the Casco Township trustees urges the people and businesses of Casco Township to support financial campaign of United Way of St. Clair County to the fullest possible extent, and let it be further resolved that Casco Township trustees on behalf of the people of Casco Township express appreciations and many volunteers, including the Board of Directors of United Way of St. Clair County and the organization it supports its generous contributions of time, energy to these agencies which seek to enrich the lives of the people of this great county. That's very nice.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so how do people donate to the United Way?
You can go to United Way's website, uwstclaire.org. I also have some cards with a QR code on it.
But are people aware of that?
It depends on if United Way's been invited into some of the businesses in your community.
Okay.
And so if they've not done campaigns in the past, I have those cards with me, I'm sorry, but what happens is we can do a presentation at someone's business and employees can sign up to give like through payroll deduction. And then, or they can do a one-time donation, or someone can just go to the website and make a donation.
I was surprised we're Stellantis.
Yeah.
Maybe we do payroll deduction. You could specify where it is, I'd do something like that.
Correct.
Can you donate through a charity now?
Yes. Yeah, so a lot of the big companies use charity now to do their donations, so there's a few different ways. Some companies do fundraisers and donate the money that way. United Way helped 16,000 people in St. Clair County last year, and I hear you guys had like 53 that use services, and there might be more, so they're still in need, obviously.
Sure.
COVID was a big factor in getting campaign dollars in for two years. United Way has not been able to go into companies to do presentations, so that was, you know, kind of painful.
What are some of the services done?
So there are services from birth to the grave. There's a program that gives books to children every month. It's called Imagination Library. We support Blue Water, VNA, and hospice, so there's hospice care and support, and so what happens is each of those organizations has to do an online application to our United Way. It's vetted all by volunteers, and the decisions are made by volunteers. The staff does not make the decision where the dollars go. So we rely heavily on volunteers, including myself and the co-chair and our entire volunteer committee that's out there making presentations and helping people, you know, get their donation packets, and the campaign officially ends on December 31st, but we fundraise through the beginning of the year too, so.
Because I heard a lot about United Way in the past, but I haven't in a long time.
Would that have been through a workplace that you were at, or? No?
No, just here and there. I mean, from people.
Sure, so people can contact the office if they have questions or if they have needs. One of the things that we do also in St. Clair County is we have a medical loan closet, so if someone needs to borrow crutches or water, you can borrow that free of charge, and people donate all those items to the office. You call and make arrangements to pick it up, so that's nice because sometimes insurance doesn't cover some of those.
Sure.
So I'm sorry that you haven't heard much about United Way. I definitely would recommend going to the website if you're considering a donation, or if there's something that we can help you with, we'd be happy to.
Well, I would like to see more people donate.
Oh, sure. You know, yes. What I can do is, Jennifer, we can send you some information that I can share with the trustees.
Sure.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on this?
Okay.
So here's my question. The agenda probably needed to have that as an action item, not just a correspondence.
Right, right.
So I don't know how you want to handle that.
Can't we just move to adopt the resolution? I mean, how can we not? I'll move that we got the resolution.
Can you just do it under? I'll support. Whatever. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept the proclamation that's made in December 2022, United Way St. Clair County Month. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, United Way does.
Can I get a copy of that by any chance if it's signed by? Or you could mail it to me.
She can have my copy.
Do you have a card?
How do you get it?
How do you? Because it's.
There's nothing.
It doesn't have a thing to sign on. We'll have to redo it. He doesn't even have a resolution on it. He's without a resolution on it.
Yeah, we're just leaving it to me to the office.
I can put a resolution.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Good luck there.
Was that supposed to have a resolution on it, or was that supposed to be a resolution?
Yeah, I thought it was given.
No, but what I'm saying is we just, you just approved it.
We need a resolution.
Is it supposed to be a resolution?
Okay, so this was resolution, we have a resolution later.
It would have come last year as well.
2000. Okay, this would have been Resolution 2022-20.
Dash one?
20. Okay. Moving on. Network computers. I have not heard anything from him since our last correspondence. This was in late October about reiterating our proposal for a payment of $3,000 to some of the manor of the ransomware there. They haven't responded, so I contacted our lead, our attorney, and they recommend that we contact our insurance carrier and we let it ride for right now. Either three things could happen. They'll file on us and small claims court. They'll want to make a deal with us, or two, they may just let it pass. So for right now. Okay? All right. Two B, snow removal contract. All right, we have, we have, we had four bids here. We have Swift Snow Removal for a bid of $6,525. We have OurScape for a cost of $4,500. Early Bird Earls for $3,120. And D and E Landscaping does an hourly per push schedule. Each of you have that there. All of them are different here. Swift, they come out when there's three inches. That's when they come out. OurScape comes out with two inches more. Early Bird Earls will come out at one inch and with salting. And D and E Landscaping, that's up to us. We give them a call and they'll be out there.
Oh.
Here's a problem with this whole, in my mind, a serious problem with the bid process. We didn't get quotes that are apples and apples. We got quotes that are apples, oranges, grapes, and pomegranates, and you really take them. They're not very effective. The inches are different, the hourly rates, the way the pricing is, the pricing structure is different, and it would seem to me that we'd want to specify from our end what we want.
Well.
And then ask them to bid on the kind of service that we want, which we couldn't quite get last year.
Yeah, well.
So I.
We have to do something today because it's gonna start snowing.
Yeah. Early Bird Earls, all of them might ask what it would cost to do the cemetery. Early Bird Earls, since we kind of notified them late, we're thinking about, you know, looking around, they said they'll do the cemetery for this year if we pay them their full yearly contract for this year.
Wow.
Yeah. On demand, let's say we have an internment or that, they'll go down there and do the cemetery for us.
Okay, this is my, I looked through these, I'm gonna give my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, so we have early bird, well, we did have early bird earls. They, on theirs, they do come if there's an inch of snow, and they do salting at an inch of snow. The problem we have with them is there was a lot of times we were already here and they didn't come, they didn't do sidewalks. We have a lot of elderly residents, or any residents, doesn't, nobody needs to be following or slipping. There's quite a few times we've all almost slipped out there. Vicki and I both salted shovel last year.
Did you give them a call and say, hey, we're?
Yeah. Yeah. So, but as I'm looking through these, the Swift one, they don't come out until it's three inches of snow.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot.
So that was my last choice. D and E, I didn't like it, says that they'll begin snowfalling within four hours. So it could start snowing at 6:00 AM, they might not get here till 10:00. Plus, if they're doing it by, by per push or, you know, and the salt, they're doing that by, you know, when they come and do that or whatever. So that one was my second to the last. OurScape is a little bit more than Early Bird Earls. He, he did tell me, he reiterated he would make sure we were first priority. That I like, but he doesn't come out until it's two inches of snow or more either.
Is there any reason we can't specify what we want with the person that we choose and see if they'll?
I'm sure we could.
And see if they'll do it for us? Either ask price or a little bit more because we might do better than that to negotiate the contract in terms that we got.
Well, I think these are what we have to work with. We don't really have time to renegotiate because we need to have an action. Because unless somebody wants to come up and plow snow for us, if they have any volunteers.
Well, I understand there's a press, but yeah.
I don't have a plot. You either.
Well, Early Bird Earls, so was this repeated calling to them?
Yeah, it wasn't just last year, I remember the year before. So, I mean, if we called them, they would come, but, you know, we're already here and, you know.
Why do you have to call them? You already have contract, right?
Dennis came up a couple times.
Yeah, Dennis would come up and clear up. So that was my opinion.
So looks like OurScape is the last one standing.
Well, I, it's between these two. I do like how Early Bird Earls, if they give during time, they would do it after an inch. I mean, I guess we could ask this one.
Yeah. But, yeah, maybe their policies. I wonder if we let it be known to Early Bird Earls that, hey, we're looking around here, we expect your service.
When you call to tell them that you're doing that, so he's aware of that.
Yeah. So.
Well, there's another approach we might take in that is to give this, empower the supervisor to make the choice between the two after he, after he puts out our requirements of what we want Early Bird Earls to do and what we want OurScape to do in terms of a level playing field, and then just go with it.
Ask them if OurScape would be willing to do it at one inch?
Yeah.
Okay. And we, how about that?
Well, I don't think we need to, we can just vote on it and do that, and I guess if he is not willing.
Yeah, you could do two. No, that would work, and then if he's not willing, we go with the other one.
Okay.
You know, some way to get more.
But if we do go with Early Bird Earls, if he's not here, we need to have a backup where someone comes to shovel salt because we're not doing it.
Well, I'll call them.
Where is OurScape at? I don't know. I think he's in like Chastor, you know, he's at Chastor.
Yeah, Early Bird Earls is over in Lake St. Clair there. So, so what's your, you want me to then, to talk to OurScape, see if they're willing to do it after one inch? And if they're willing to do it, go with that? If not, you go with Early Bird Earls?
I mean, I can contact. OurScape? Yeah. Because he, he sent me the quote, so I can contact him.
Which one is that?
The OurScape one.
Contact him. Just tell them that this office opens at 8:30.
Right.
And there are residents that come back and forth, even if they're just using the drop box or this or that or anything.
And we wanted.
Relive to them.
And at one inch, I'd say would be. So, but if they're not willing to match that, then we go with Early Bird Earls, okay?
And do they have all of the five early copies that the other guys have?
I didn't check any of that for anyone. I'm sure D and E does because they are.
Yeah.
Early Bird Earls does. We checked them.
Yeah, they say, they say that expressly.
Yes.
But the OurScape doesn't, and that's a concern for me too.
Okay. All right, what's a motion?
I'm not making one.
Do you want to make a motion?
No, you know, you guys are in the offices. I want to support whatever you are most comfortable with, frankly. I mean, I have my druthers about how the bid process is run and the way you can, I mean, Early Bird Earls is a lot cheaper for a one inch, but I understand you have problems with it, so whatever you're most comfortable with, I will support. I'm not willing to make the motion, I'm not in a stance.
I make a motion to contact Early Bird Earl. Give them the idea that we want this done with one inch, that the office opens for business at 8:30. They have to be there before that.
And we don't want to have to call.
And if we're not calling, we better be first on their agenda for plowing.
Support. Thank you.
So that was for Early Bird Earls.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to hire Early Bird Earl for a cost of $3,120, and that to give them a call that we are first priority, that we need to have it done by 8:30. Plowed and salted.
Our contractors start coming, they know that this office opens at 8:30 for contractors so they can get about their business.
Well, you know, the one thing about, well.
When you add, I'm sorry.
May, one thing about this, if we do do this, we vote on this, we'll give them a year and they're straightened up for next year's.
Also write down exactly.
But these are annual contracts, so that goes without saying.
And when we sign this, right on it, what we sign, what they initial, exactly what we just gave, so that there's no confusion about where this is at with them, and then if they don't abide by it, we'll go somewhere else.
And move, yeah.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in support to hire Early Birds Earls for $3,120, and to make it think that we are first and foremost, it has to be done by 8:30, no questions. Okay. Roll call vote.
Anderson, no.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Yeah, and that's, but it's a good thing, you know, what Dan brought up. If we're not happy, we go next year, we'll say eight.
We'll do that later.
I would strongly suggest that we have a, have a approach to these things in the future that puts out our specifications in a consistent way to all of the folks that are looking for a bid from, and that we compare apples to apples all the time, as opposed to doing it this ad hoc manner that we've been doing it for the last 25 years.
Okay.
And we run this by everybody who wants.
Jennifer, I'll talk to them.
That's fine. Like I said, if there needs to be a backup plan, I can hear my 8:30 is gonna clear.
Okay, moving on. Okay, next thing we do is C is High Tech. Okay, this is to finish our purchase of the replacement of the office computers. What's that?
You can do the press.
So this is High Tech, the office computer replacement. Last month, we only authorized partial payment on this, so this is the balance of the cost of a total of $9,853. I like being wrapped up so nice that power's gone, I have more room for my feet. So. Do I have a motion to approve this for my tech? Complete this sale.
I make a motion to approve the adjusted amount for the computers to $9,853 for High Tech.
Okay.
And that replaces what we approved last month.
So. I'm sorry, Jennifer, this replaces.
Well, because we approved it, but we approved it with the wrong amount because there was, the total was on the back.
Got you, okay.
Yeah, so.
All right, good.
We approved it, but we just needed to change the amount.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Okay, we have motion support to fill. I'm calling that. Support for $9,853, the High Tech, the replacement of his computer. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, hark up Dan. Moving on, phase one, went two bids. We had one bid on it, Teltow Contracting, I will bring that. We had one bid on it, TELTO contracting, I will bring that before the board, go officially accept in January.
Can we get another bid on that?
No, the bid period is closed, yeah. Our park planner says, I unsealed a bit, she goes, they have to send a report to the D N R sometimes, they have to do a report on justification on when they only get one bid. A lot of times usually contractors are busy to get out of work. But we didn't get one bid, and I like it's a Costco company. Phase two, the second passport grant, that's to double the size of the parking lot to build a thirty by sixty picnic pavilion. I was told by Pam Blau, we were successful, we were awarded that by the D N R the other day. Yeah, so we had two successful passport grants. A passport grant is when you get your license plates and you want to get access to the state parks or D N R boat launches. You pay for that, those monies collected are used on these passport grants for communities to develop recreational spaces. So we got two. Three later on, we're going to be approving resolution is for Sparks. Okay, the passport grant's a match grant. We're using these monies from our parks and recs, what we get from the millage from Sinclair County and matching that to help develop the park. Well, the third one, the Sparks Grant. That's money come out of the COVID money they got from the federal government estate. And they're sending out to D N R to help develop recreational spaces. What I'm asking for, our passport grants have the driveway going in and most of the parking gravel, except the handicap parking areas that we pave. The Sparks Grant, I'm going to pave all of that. So get all the driveway in and all the parking lot paved. So when they had meetings up in the port here in the summer, people were asking for playground equipment, splash pads, and I was the only one asking for asphalt, so. What's nice about this, there's three rounds, the cement date's Monday. If we don't make it on the first one, there's two more rounds. So if we don't make it, we can spiff off our package and hopefully get it on the second or third round.
We'll get it.
Yeah, yeah, so we have a really, Castle has a really good park planner, she's done work around the state and she, her and her team are really good and snagging those dollars out there. Okay, moving on, okay, new business, appoint constable, remainder of the term for constable ending in November twenty twenty four. Did you guys remember last meeting, Wayne Bungarger, because of personal reasons, had to step down as constable? He wasn't able to fulfill his duties. Instead of, I like the idea of having a constable and the only official one are the liquor inspections in the township. Township businesses that have liquor licenses, that's their only official duty. Although if the bill, the board determines it, we can assign additional duties to the constable. We have had five residents, Chad Zinkis, Christopher Kubaki, Robert Taylor, Tyler, was it Sheesh? And I apologize if I misspelled that name and she didn't pronounce the name, and Jennifer Kenny. We all sent a letter of intent and a resume. And I guess I'm looking for the trustees here to give me.
Do you know any of these people, Dan?
No.
No, I know, I mean, Chad Zink is his father, they started after he was down.
And sir, you're.
He's been with me for a long time.
All neighbors.
Very, very happy to be here. But they all sound, I mean, there's no one that has a chip against them, they all sound pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
Quite nice to see so many. But I don't, I don't have any knowledge of any of them personally.
Well, we have two of them here, we could, we could ask you guys to, we could put you on the spot.
Well, the fact that they came, that means a lot.
I think so too.
Okay. Christopher Dubowski, I've been under, lived in Castle since two thousand six. I used to come to all the meetings before COVID started, then I stopped and I started watching them on YouTube. But I've always wanted to get involved. At first I thought about getting on the Parks and Recs Committee, but then COVID came along and then.
We don't have a park to go to.
Well, that planning thing, when they're in the beginning, before they even had a location. And then like constable job, that just seems like a pretty good job that I like a foot in the door to start learning more about the board and stuff like that.
And you have time to.
Yep, I have time.
We have.
Yep, I work, start working, I work from three in the morning, but I always get off at one thirty, so in the afternoon. So I got basically the whole afternoon and the whole evening to do. Whatever duties are necessary.
Chad Zink has been here since eight seven, so dad did it, well, grandpa technically, but he raised me, so he's my dad. Dad did it, like just like he said, the good way to use your foot in the door. I got plenty of time to get it done, eight hours a day, so I'll have two thirty.
Mike was your grandfather?
Yeah, but I, he raised me, so I called him dad, so, but yeah, grandfather. He was a good guy. Oh, yeah.
I say we put the names in a hat and draw one. We've got two great candidates here. I don't want to choose between them. You know, pick a card, any card. Put their names in a hat, somebody draw their names, put them in a thing and put them in a hat, and we'll draw.
We'll bowl.
What?
We'll go get a ball out of it and lay a hand.
This is the only way we're not going to sit here for forty-five minutes trying to figure out, because you're both qualified. We're both delighted to have you. And we're going to need lots of help on that park and rec community, but once we get going.
Yeah, we, I have a plan to stand up for, and I should have mentioned Park Company, that's one of my roles for point twenty-three.
What's that?
There, Mr. Steeler took the name.
Yes.
There you go.
Our, yes.
There's nobody.
Mr. Steeler's very honest person, so we'll trust him.
And it's an elected position, so in twenty twenty-four, it'll be on ballot.
Yeah, you can put all your campaign signs up and go through it.
Yeah, also true. I'm looking, next month I'll be, I have on the thing for alternate zoning board of appeals too. Yeah.
Yeah, that's always a fun job.
Yeah, probably the toughest committee to be on.
Yeah, because you have to say no.
Sometimes you really do.
Yeah.
It's not always easy.
All right, Mr. Steeler, the moment is yours.
Seal's key, huh?
All right, you picked, try it out.
All right, congratulations.
Yeah, I know that comes with a K for the T.
That's right. Chris, are you willing to be, in case I don't get anyone else interested in maybe going on the Z B A? Okay, I'll see if there's any other people.
That's where I start now.
That's, that's a tough.
I did, I did too.
I watched them the other night and I was seeing.
Yeah, yeah.
They did pretty good.
Oh, that was a planning commission though.
Oh, that was a planning commission?
Yeah, this is even tougher.
Yeah.
Because these are people who have already been told, no, you can't do that.
Right, yeah, okay, well, congratulations, Chad.
Congratulations.
Yeah, Wayne Bungarger will train you, while you also tell, okay, but Wayne will get you spun up and he'll take you, he said he'd take you around and. Yeah, so, okay, all right. Thank you there.
Thank you, Jennifer, all for showing up.
Although all the things, they're pretty, there were some pretty.
They were good folks, I liked, really nice to see that, many good folks come out. We'll have to roll them in some other place.
Okay, yeah, we have to do the motion. Okay, can some, right here, I wrote it out. There, can someone make the motion here?
Move to appoint Chad Zink as the new.
Well, we.
I'm sorry.
Again, you guys.
That area.
Yeah.
Okay, marching to appoint Chad Zink to complete the term of Wayne Bungarger as constable ending in, with the term ending in November two thousand twenty-four.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion to appoint Chad Zink to complete the term of Wayne Bungarger as constable ending in November twenty twenty-four. We had support. Do we need to do a roll call vote?
Yeah.
An appointment?
I would.
We have a new roll call vote, we need a, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries, all right. Okay. Next one, Richmond Lennox EMS provides contract. This is because of the vote in August to pay ambulance services via millage. Sinclair County was the last county in the state, they had to pay as you go. And an ambulance service like Tri Hospital EMS that covers most of the county, we're losing over a million dollars a year now. People just didn't pay their ambulance bills. Our area, Richmond Lennox, they're getting help from McCollum County, even though they cover several Sinclair County townships. But they got on board to help Tri Hospital, because Tri Hospital was going to close their garage in K P A in Yale just to make ends meet. Well, the voters of Sinclair County wisely saw this and say, hey, this is an important thing, and they passed it. This contract, just, it's a modified contract with saying is, because of the money we get from the county to cover ambulance thing, we got, we have to pay Richmond Lennox EMS, that's the only difference on there compared to here. Most everything else is a sin.
That's collected, that's collected through taxes, huh?
I beg your pardon?
That's going to be collected through the taxes?
Yes, it's a, it's a zero point one five zero 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 mils, so it's half a mil.
Yeah.
And that's really, that's a lot of money.
We get the money from the county and then we gotta send it to Richmond Lennox EMS.
So are they going to send us a bill or whoever's going to do this?
If it's on the tax bill.
Then it goes.
It will be a disbursement. And I will get with the county treasurer, because it's either dispersed to Sinclair County and they disperse it, or they will direct me to disperse directly. I disperse to all the schools directly.
Okay, so it doesn't affect.
No, it doesn't affect the general fund, it comes out of the tax dollars. And it have to go, how long is this for renewal, but. I don't know if they.
It's two thousand twenty-six, December twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
So it'll be.
So it'll, it'll come up for renewal in twenty twenty-six. So I imagine it'll either be dispersed to them or Sinclair County and it doesn't have anything to do with the general fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the updated agreement for emergency medical services with Richmond Lennox EMS.
That's worth.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the agreement for emergency medical services to Richmond Lennox EMS, the modified agreement, and we have support, okay. Ready to roll call vote on this? Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Goldstone, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries, all right. Okay, this is Pam Blau, this is for work on construction plans and bidding for phase one. So total due for this invoice is three hundred dollars.
Next time, we can probably put both of them together.
Yeah, I got the other one just yesterday or today.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for Pam Blau for three hundred dollars.
For.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept the invoice from Pam Blau for three hundred dollars. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. All three votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Okay, next one is High Tech meeting computer purchases. Now, this is a laptop, ladies, that's going to stay up here, that can be used for meetings, like for Zoom meetings, a hook on there.
The sign.
Okay, the sign.
Yeah, we need it for the sign.
Yeah.
And then whatever. The one that we have, the office one, is one of those refurbished, brand, brand new ones from our previous. And we, we have to stand in the bathroom, in the very corner, to try to hook up to the sign.
Yeah, I saw a cage up there this morning.
Yeah, and it's very slow and.
And this could be a laptop if you need, need to do Zoom, roll call is me up here. Okay, that's a good idea, it said right one of the office computers up here. Okay, the cost for this is, this laptop will be one thousand and forty-five dollars.
Make a motion to pay the bill to High Tech for one thousand forty-five dollars.
Okay, we have a motion in support to buy the laptop here for the hall for one thousand forty-five dollars. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is High Tech with a maintenance block time purchase. Now, they're having a twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two end of year time block sale.
It never expires either, does it? Well, and if you look at that invoice that we just approved, it says time block estimated one to three hours.
Okay, one to three hours, okay.
So that's just an example.
So we have a ten hour block for sixteen hundred dollars, a twenty-five hour block for three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, a fifty hour time block for seven thousand two hundred and fifty, and a hundred hour time block for thirteen thousand five hundred.
I think we should either go with the fifty or a hundred. Oh, yeah. They don't ever expire, and they're going to be coming in, we're hopefully going to have a redo with the wiring eventually.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how long that's going to take.
Okay, so one hundred hour time block for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, and it never expires.
Correct.
Okay. And this sale is.
What do you mean it never expires? Doesn't it expire after a hundred hours?
No, like they're not good for just one year, they're good for however long it takes us to use it.
Oh, I think it's five years to use a hundred hours, they don't ever expire.
What's the estimate of how long that many hours will last us?
We don't know. It depends, like I said, if you look at that, it's an hour for that. When he came and installed all of our computers, he was here for two days.
All day.
Yeah, yeah, he was.
Sounds right, when you put it like that, so it's not, we, we, a hundred hours, it doesn't matter what the time.
It doesn't matter, yeah, it could be a year, five.
All right, then I'll make a motion to go with the hundred hour time block for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, which is a savings of thirty-five hundred dollars off the normal labor rate.
I'll support that.
I have a question. Can we actually pay for services that we have not yet received? Is it allowed under the law?
Well, we pay for snow.
Snow, we will.
Yes.
Pass and snow.
And we pay, we pay for lawn care.
So this, this probably already into that category.
Category.
They work with a lot of U N S categories, so they can offer us, they work with a lot of U N S categories.
That is, okay.
They're, they're good.
No, I'm very, very pleased with everything I hear about.
Yeah, about three months ago, I had something snuck through, and it was a screen page come on, it was, I immediately called them up. They told me to shut it down, they went on, went in and cleaned it up. So, yeah, they've been great so far. So, okay, okay, we have a motion for a hundred hour time block for the cost of thirteen thousand five hundred. Anyone second that?
Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer did, okay.
I need a motion.
Okay, we had a second. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Oh, yes, Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five votes in the affirmative, motion carries. All right, the next one is the farmland rental. This is our farmland on Meister Road. We've had a contract with Mr. Campow for several years now. And I'm ma, I'm recommending that we rent him Saint, or three?
What is?
What's that?
He came in and paid, I don't know if you see it all.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of a done deal?
Yeah, we still have to approve.
Yes, well, then I will, I will make a motion to approve Casco Township farmland rental agreement extension with Mr. Campow for another year in the amount of three thousand five hundred one dollars.
You paid the amount of three thousand.
But due to a pending wetland determination, four years of discount bid. So, three thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars is what we're going to ask for.
Three, all right.
And we already have his money.
Okay, and can I have support for that?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a support for the, um, to rent farmland to Mr. Campow for three thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina?
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Yeah, this, next year I'll make it, sure, we do this in November. Okay, next one is to pay the taxes on our farmland here, and that's a cost of seven hundred ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents.
Make a motion to pay the taxes on the Casco Township property.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion to support to pay the taxes on Casco Township property for seven hundred ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, motion carries.
And you'll see that on a property that has a taxable salary of a hundred and four thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, Casco Township is paying fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents to EMS.
Wow.
That's what five minutes is. Or point five minutes, sorry.
Okay. Okay, next one is Katie Paul Page. Katie is one of our building clerks. She does, I think, a good job. She is very conscientious.
That's a moot point, and you know it.
What's that?
That's a moot point, and you know it.
Right. And Brenda simply couldn't do her job with the assistant without Katie's assistance. And they do a lot of the work with inputting into BSNA. So I guess we have a thing here that Katie deserves a pay raise. But the thing is, we have our old, our old employee handbook, but the thing, well, I think it may be outdated and it should be revised.
It is outdated and it should be revised, but it has not, at this point, been revised. So we either have to get rid of it, start from scratch. I suggest, as I suggested in the past, that we have annual reviews and requests for salary based on, not just, and I don't even want to say experience at this point, information at this point. You might have only had been here for two years, or one year, or six months, or whatever. You still know a heck of a lot more than people who have never dealt with the BSNA system before. So, but still in all, to get things in order, we must start from scratch or else we will be working under the auspices of that agreement. And if we're doing that, then this does not work. So decide what you want to do. Be done with the old and antiquated fee schedule of someone just coming in the door and go with an annual review and then make your motion. But that's the only way that I'm going to look at this.
And I think you had said some kind of, Joe, that you were going to work up a recommendation for the board to consider based on some salary information from the MTA.
Right.
And the way others do this.
Yeah.
And then we're going to start fresh with something like that, either adopt it or adopt some variation.
I'm.
And I think that would be the time to consider this. Once we get that done, I know you're a little late on it.
Yeah.
September was the original date.
Yeah, well, it's been a busy.
But it's been difficult.
Yeah, we have a lot of stuff to go on here.
But stuff always goes on.
Go that direction.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know Gina.
What would you think?
There's a, something, sorry.
See, I'm, I'm thinking that with her added duties of the website and, and social media, I mean, that's important.
It's very important.
Yeah.
And there's no one else that's doing that.
Yeah, no, no one's disputing, I think they're not disputing, you know, Katie's very capable. I guess we have to, what we have to do maybe is the whole fee schedule and employee handbook, suspend that.
What will that happen?
Well.
That's the thing.
The thing that troubles me is that we have people that have served in the township loyally and effectively for a total of about forty years. And they had to live in, under the pay schedule, that the current pay schedule, and wait many years to see their pay increase in an incremental fashion. And that may not have been right, or it may have been right. But I think we have to do something that encompasses the whole office situation with those folks as well as with Katie going forward and not ignore the fact that some waited for many, many years for small incremental increases. And I don't think we're going to abrogate that all at once because we have one outstanding employee, Katie is. There's no question of it.
Yeah, but in today's day and age with the way the economy is going, I mean, a two-dollar raise.
Well, and now that she, she could go to Panda Express and make three dollars more than what she makes here at Panda Express.
Isn't that a crime? So then.
We got to put a date on it.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Because she's, she's waiting.
I'm waiting to have the handbook scotched.
Okay.
Done with, over with.
Okay.
Because that handbook says that this is not possible.
Because of the amount of time she was here? Is that why?
Yes.
So.
So.
I'm not familiar with that.
Well, we're, we just need to be.
That's why I asked.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I will have something for the January, new pay schedule, we can vote on it.
Everybody should be up for review.
No, I, I don't because we've been putting this off. I agree that we, we need to do the handbook, but we need to take care of Katie too. So if, if she has to wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we do a retro raise, just like we did for.
For employees.
So it's just, it's not fair that we keep putting her off because we're not making the time to put the handbook on the agenda.
Okay, I, that's.
But that's fine.
Yeah, no, I kind of like that idea. So, because we'll get some, because we'll bring it before and then we can look it over. And then when we do approve it, we can give Katie the back pay. So.
She's asking for two dollars over what she's making right now.
And what's she making per hour?
Fifteen, fifty.
Fifteen, fifty.
I would simply make a motion to, what's the word? I keep using my word. Let's just say, I would make a motion to retire the antiquated Casco Township handbook that guides us with hourly wages. That's the first part of my motion. You grant me that and I will grant you the two dollars. I will grant you my vote for the two-dollar raise. Because then we start.
Can we do that today?
Yes. I mean, I've been wanting to do this for three, four months now. And the only thing holding me up with this is that we are bound by that.
Yeah, and I, I made that thing about what Katie does.
So does Linda.
Okay.
So does Brenda.
Okay, no, 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 just let me finish. All three of our inspectors, we've offered them to buy them laptops and train them BSNA, and we put their debt, all three of them refuse, and that falls.
I fire them.
Well.
But that's up to you.
That's.
It's up to us.
Well, you can.
I, I mean, they're doing their job and it's.
They're not doing their job. If they're not, if they're not coming on board with what BSNA and the, and the people in the building office agree them to do, they are not doing that.
Well, in the future, when we get newer, let's say, when the other ones tend, say, they're not going to do it, that'll be one of our requirements.
I think the ones that are out there now should do it. Kelly does it for other municipalities that he works for. He's already set up with it.
Yeah, I don't think you'd get away with this in East China Township.
Contractors are, they're.
Yeah, well, okay, that's the, the thing about.
But anyway, one thing at a time. So, the first part of my motion, retire that handbook.
The whole thing, or you want to just do the?
I, I want, what I want to get to is an annual salary review.
Retire the pay scale?
Retire the pay standard.
Out of the, you want to pay scale? That takes it out. Or bit? Is that a better one?
To strike.
Retire, that's a better.
You want retire?
All right, retire.
Retire the wage scale. Get it out.
It's replacing wage scales, wage scales.
We are replacing it.
And replacing.
With an annual review. To be done when?
Yeah. I'd say to.
Our fiscal year begins.
Yeah.
April first.
In April first.
I would say, let's put TBT on that because there may be different ways to evaluate people we're not aware of. And I think we should have, look at other things.
Well, if you're not going to do it till April, it gives you plenty of time.
Beg your pardon?
If we don't do it till April, that gives plenty, it gives a couple months to figure out this.
Right.
Annual review, right? You want to do an annual review for a raise? Because I want to make sure I put it in correctly.
But, and that will have to be fleshed out of it. Because to whom do these people go?
Yeah, you have to work out the whole.
I mean, I have deputy.
You would have to do your deputy.
I would do my deputy, you would do your deputy. Who does the building department?
Well.
That would be Joe, he's in charge of.
Yeah, I, I, I will contact the MTA and get guidance from them on this issue.
And when would they be done? They're approved. So you have to work on it.
A couple logistics.
So that, just like the elected officials, when we come to the March meeting, we have our pay request. That's, that's different, that's voted on by the township. This is not voted on by the township, but it's the same thing. It's an annual request for review.
I'm sure the lady that we talked to, the, the HR probably has something to, we'll get contacted. I mean, we can contact other HRs.
Mm-hmm. I just don't want to be losing good people to Panda Express.
Correct. So, am I putting on here, I'm going to motion to retire the handbook wage scale and replacing annual.
Review.
You.
Salary review.
Salary review.
By immediate supervisor.
Right, right, details to be determined.
Details.
Is that good?
Yeah.
To determine, okay. Okay, so that's Collins over. And are we approving this?
I think it needs to be separate.
That's a separate thing, but that, you, you do this and then we'll talk about the other.
I'll support it. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to retire the current wage scale and employee handbook and replace it with an annual review with the detail yet to be determined. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes. Is there a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah, Jennifer.
Because you don't agree with Jennifer.
No, I, I guess.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kaczynski, yes.
Okay, Stevens? Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay. All right.
Second part. Make your motion.
He can't do a motion.
He can't.
I make a motion to approve.
He can't, oh, because he loves the.
Yes, actually, the supervisors can't do this.
He submitted it. All right.
He can submit things when he's, when he's full stop.
I didn't understand what's going on.
She says that the supervisor cannot make a motion. He, he.
He can add to the agenda, but he can't. Make a motions or support.
But he is the one that brought forth the idea.
He's allowed to do that.
Okay, so someone else has to make the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the raise for Katie for two dollars an hour and I say we do a back pay to our June meeting where the, where she requested.
Well, I would say, I would, when was she hired in current? I would do it the annual. When she, when would she?
She hired him in twenty twenty-one, November, October? October, November twenty twenty.
Let's do it at her annual, I, that's my recommendation.
So make a wait longer?
No, no.
What?
No.
No, that'd be twenty-two.
But a back pay.
Just twenty twenty-one?
Okay.
Twenty, twenty-two, November twenty-two.
Right.
Is that what you want to say?
Yes.
November of twenty-two?
Would it be, she would be here a year? Right?
No, I, I, my motion is to, to grant the raise and to do back pay to anyone she asked for it. We just did back pay for Brenda and Linda because they asked for raises and we back paid them. So why do for two and not for?
Well, just a question, do it up, okay.
Is that, Collins, do you think that's, is that equitable in the whole scheme of things?
It is. I, I mean, I would love to say, you know, that my deputy would tie in, dah, 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 dah. But that would be also a moot point because she's invaluable to me. I can't throw enough cash at her, you know? But I'm looking at the living wage pay scale for somebody who works twenty-four hours, six hours, twenty-six hours a week.
All right, so are you, are you supporting the general provision? Okay, we have a motion to, to pay a pay increase to two hundred, two dollars an hour and do back pay to her original letter, which was in June fourteenth.
So.
Two thousand twenty-two. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Katie. Five votes in the affirmative, motion carries. And one thing, what, Katie is a child of the twenty-first century. And when it comes to the technical stuff, and when we get our credit card stuff in, it's going to be valuable to have someone of that generation here to deal with.
Yes, but the other two have institutional knowledge.
Yeah, no.
Which is equally valuable.
I use both of them today. And I use them every day. Okay. All right, next item. Next item here is Golden Hawk appraisal. Back at the July meeting, we approved a search for a quote to appraise the Golden Golf course. Attached is a quote by Valbridge, property advisor, from our attorney on taxation issue, S. Douglas Tuma, will retain to conduct the appraisal. Shelley informed me that the golf courses are difficult to appraise, and Valbridge is currently the only firm that handles such facilities. Shelley added, there's a chance Golden Hawk and Mr. Tuma can reach a settlement. However, we have to be prepared to do the appraisal, to be completed. The total cost of the appraisal will not exceed five thousand five hundred dollars. Attached is page two of the Valbridge contract, along with Golden Hawk's estimation on what they believe should be assessed. I have the full contract. I decide not to grant everybody, you know, to save the paper. So Shelley thinks, go, Golden Hawk, we did this all right for Michigan Meadows, so we need to do this for Golden Hawk.
I make a motion.
I'll support.
That we, we have the appraisal for Golden Hawk to give our assessor a vote to stand on.
Okay, not to exceed five thousand five hundred?
Let's hope so, yes.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to, to approve the appraisal for Golden Hawk Golf Course by, by Valbridge Property Advisors to not exceed five thousand five hundred dollars. Roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Dan, I vote in for it, motion carries. All right, we have, Jennifer, you want to explain this about that?
Yeah, we have the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks is a group that we belong to, and they have the Clerks Institute, and we went to the Clerks Institute last year. We got a scholarship. And part of the agreement was that we would go for all three years, and you guys, we brought that to you guys, so we're just putting it forward where you were going for the second one, but we need to have it approved.
Okay, I mean, you said you have a scholarship, so you're on scholarships?
No, scholarship was first year, so that's it.
Okay, and how much is the cost of this?
It was six hundred fifty for the registration.
Okay.
Plus, yeah, that's just for the class, plus, yeah, hotel and travel expenses.
Okay, and that's where, is that going to be?
Um, Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant, okay.
And that's all we.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that the clerk and deputy clerk attend the, with the Municipal Association of Clerks Institute there, up in Mount Pleasant, which state it is going on?
We're going to go the first week, which is twelve twelfth.
Okay, March twelfth through seventeen?
Twelfth is, yeah.
Okay, for a cost of six hundred and fifty dollars.
Each.
Each.
Plus hotel and travel expenses.
Plus hotel and travel expenses. Okay, do you have support for that?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion, support, roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yeah, Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
And I remain so pleased that this is, this kind of thing is beginning to happen again in the country.
Yeah.
It's been too long, and it's much to your both credit.
Now, you ladies, you had your, you know, the voters want early voting, and I'm sure that's all that you guys are going to talk about there.
That, that's, yeah, that will be part of it, yes. Because there's a lot of stuff that's going to change, and.
Sure.
It's going to be crazy.
Yeah, it's going to be a challenge. We'll see if our beloved state legislature supports with the will of the people. Okay. Okay, I'd like to reappoint, next item, three K, I'd like to reappoint Roger Sloan, Chris Stevens, Eugene Uvalde to a two-year term for the Casco Township Board Review, starting one January twenty twenty-three, and then December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I so moved.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to reappoint Roger Sloan, Chris Stevens, and Eugene Uvalde to a two-year term. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's the only committee that all, I, supervisor set is recorded, it's the only committee we get, where we're all military veterans. Okay, next one, three L, I'd like to reappoint Senator Bishop to a three-year term to the Casco Township Zone Board Appeal, starting one January twenty twenty-three, and then December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved, she's been at, in the second chair now for a number of years, she's good.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to accept, reappoint Senator Bishop to a three-year term, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Quarters to the Casco Township Plan Commission, I'd like to reappoint James Edward and Gerald Keller to a three-year term to the Casco Township Plan Commission, starting January first, twenty twenty-three, and then December twenty, thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint Jim Zedward, James Zedward and Gerald Keller to the Plan Commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Quarters to the Casco Township Board Trustees liaison to the Plan Commission, I would like to reappoint Gina Kazinsky as Casco Township Board Trustees liaison to the Plan Commission, starting December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and then November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Okay, you sure you want to take it after last week?
Yes. It was good.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to reappoint Gina Kazinsky as Board Rep for Plan Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the next thing, we have one, two, three, four bonds. These were all bonds done. Cell tower installation, these, I would have grouped them together, but they're done by different contractors, and they, all of them, basically, a total cost of the bond and the permit fee comes out to three hundred eighty dollars. The, the chump changed, they just don't even bother. So, the first one, we have equipment upgrade, is Verizon. The total cost of the bond was three hundred eighty dollars.
I make a motion to revoke number thirty-six ninety-two.
Okay, so.
An amount of three hundred eighty dollars.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to revoke bond number thirty-six ninety-two for a cost of three hundred eighty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to do a roll call?
I think it's money, I think you should.
Okay, no problem, Jennifer?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. We, next thing, same thing, but this is T-Mobile, permit number thirty-nine ninety-five for.
I make a motion to revoke bond number thirty-nine ninety-five, the amount of three hundred eighty dollars.
Superb. Okay, we have a motion, support, to revoke permit number three, bond number thirty-nine ninety-five for three hundred eighty dollars. Roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, we have, we have bond number four zero three four, and this is American Tower, same cost, three hundred eighty dollars.
I'll make a motion to revoke three hundred and eighty dollars on bond four oh three four.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to revoke bond four zero three four for three hundred eighty dollars. Roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, we have bond number four zero five four, this is American Tower again, cost of three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I'll make the motion to revoke three hundred and fifty-five dollars on bond number four oh five four.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to revoke bond four zero five four for a cost of three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries, so, okay. Okay, the next one here. We have Linda West. I am, Linda West needed to help getting up the, the Richmond RA, and Ira Township Fire Department came out to us since, oh, she had a, oh, she had helped getting up. I appreciate that help, and at this time, though, money is very tight, I am writing to see if you can waive the fifty-dollar fee due being on fixed income for such time. Thank you for taking the time to help in any way possible.
You should come across that kind of thing before.
Oh, yeah.
We got it, man, times, yeah. I don't know the particulars, but it's a small act of kindness. And we might do that.
So I'll make a motion. How, how would I make that motion? To?
To waive the.
To waive the fifty-dollar invoice.
Induce.
For, for Linda West.
Fire Run.
Fire Run. Ira twenty-two dash six four three, for Linda West.
So then who pays?
I don't know, but it is good wave. She's great.
Colleen?
What?
What's your, Rob, tell us?
I'd sooner pay it for her than have it waived, but whatever you think. Either way, I don't want it on her shoulders.
No.
So, I'll go.
We'll just waive it.
All right, okay, we have a motion, support to waive Fire Run, Ira twenty-two dash six four three. Okay. Roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. All right, this is T., Casco Township Board of Trustees, we have to set the twenty, twenty twenty-three meeting dates, times, locations. The meeting board date for the twenty twenty-three for the Casco Township Board of Trustees is January tenth, February fourteenth, March fourteenth, April eleven, May nine, June thirteen, July eleven, August eight, September twelve, October ten, November fourteen, December twelve. All meetings are held on Tuesdays, on Tuesdays at seven PM at Casco Township Hall, forty-five twelve, Meldrum Road, Casco, Michigan, forty-eight zero six four.
Um, March, I will be at the Clerks Institute. Yeah, so I don't know, and it's our annual meeting, so we probably need to change that date.
Okay.
So I'll be either the Tuesday before or the Tuesday after.
Well, the Tuesday after is.
The Plan Commission.
So we have to move to the first Tuesday.
Which is? So, March seventh.
Okay, March seventh, does anyone have a problem with that? No, I don't either. Okay. All right, so this is a list I presented, except with the thing, we changed March fourteenth to March seventh, because the clerk is going to be at the, the conference there, so annual meeting. Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Do I case support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to accept the twenty twenty-three Board Trustees meeting dates with one adjustment from March fourteenth to March seventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, motion carries. Okay, the next one is Resolution twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen. Casco, this is Casco Township Bell River Park paving. We have to pass this resolution, so our park planner can upload it into DNR application. So, we got to get this approved, and then signed and set tomorrow.
I make a motion to approve the Casco Township Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen for Casco Township Bell River Park paving.
Support. Okay, we have a motion, support, to accept Casco Township Resolution two thousand, two thousand twenty-two nineteen, Casco Township Bell River Park paving. Okay.
Adopt.
To adopt.
Thank you.
And this is the thing, we're, we're in this, we're asking for, for a cost of two hundred and six thousand dollars by the DNA to pay that, repay.
Good.
Yes.
Now, is that even? I'm here, so.
Okay. All in favor of adopting Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, motion carries. Next thing is another thing from Handblow, this is, this is the Sparks Grant Application Assistant, I just got this today.
I make a motion to approve the invoice from Handblow of the amount of five hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, we have vote, support.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to accept payment of five hundred fifty dollars for the Sparks Grant Application, Handblow. Any questions? Roll call, vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Last but not least is the Casco Township two thousand twenty-two holiday schedule. Okay, we need to adopt that, it reflects the St. Clair County Court schedule, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
They don't officially have it out yet, but we went through and checked the dates and stuff, those are all the, the numbers.
And the date for Thanksgiving, the halls closed, and I always call it, they care, they don't care. Always want a bad day closed. Okay, do I have, do we need to read those dates off?
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to accept those?
I so moved.
Okay, we support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion, support, to accept the two thousand twenty-three Casco Township, the close schedule, right?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, motion carries. Okay. Next, we have citizens' comments now, this is the second time you guys can talk to us about. Bill?
Bill Steeler on St. Clair Highway. Tonight, I heard many agenda that total up over thirty thousand dollars that you approved. Is that coming out of just the general fund? Or does later, does it get sorted, what fund it comes out of?
Well, the park, the two park invoices that we approved, that comes out of the Parks and Rec.
Yeah. So there's more that comes out later, gets?
Well, no, that'll come right out of the Parks and Rec, we have different, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the constable gets paid right out of the liquor fund, because we get a separate.
So there are other funds out there than just the general?
Yeah.
And we do have a comprehensive report on all of our finances that are reviewed every year, which I'm sure you can take a look at if you'd like, so that'll maybe answer a lot of other questions. Any questions?
And unlike the federal government, we have to have lock boxes for Parks and Rec. You cannot lend or borrow from that account, a liquor account is one, trust and agency is one, they are all individual and separate accounts that cannot be.
It's for.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't pay well, which, that's what differentiates us from the federal government.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, does any of the board members have comments?
No.
I just. Oh, no, no.
I just want to say, and I'm sure you're all aware, taxes went out the first of December, they will be due on February the fourteenth. I do not accept postmark in the winter bill, because I have to settle with the county. But on that day, I'll be in my office until five thirty, while I'll be in my office until five thirty, if somebody needs me any day, but let me know. There's many ways to pay taxes. Dropbox in my office, at two banks in town, and we are working on credit card.
Yeah, I talked to Richard Malone, who that, he says that's in the, it's being processed right now, so we hope, I'll give him a call tomorrow, see when we expect. right now, so we hope, I'll give him a call, I'll see when we expect, we have boxes, debit card readers and the instructions.
My own, yeah. But don't raid these roads in February, it'll pay up at First State Bank, they have a paid road.
And Mr. Malone says once, it'll take, once we approve it, it'll take several weeks for it to arrive and get it up going and keep bothering him.
So by next season, next tax season, we'll be able to, um, accept credit cards?
Yeah. Okay, anything else? I just have one thing, a week ago today, um, the Plan Commission, um, Great Lakes Trucking came before it, um, to get recommendations for conditional rezoning there at the property, they're interested, county lines from Bourne Lane. There was a lot of question, Jan, would you like to talk about it?
There was a lot of questions, but you know what we didn't address last week is the water situation, that was not addressed at all.
Yeah.
Because we were so entombed on, well, that wasn't what the meeting was for anyway, the meeting was for, to rezon.
Yeah, well.
Request to rezon.
Yeah, what, what they would do, Great Lakes Trucking, currently our master, it's zoned agriculture, our master plan shows that is like light office space commercial. There's a major pipeline, it goes right through that property and, um, Great Lakes Trucking is making a thing, a conditional rezoning, they have to set the conditions for the rezoning. And what it was, if they would have approved it, they would have had eighteen months to meet those conditions, and the big thing we had was the traffic situation, trucks pulling in and out, especially into county line road right near the older path, they are making the left, plus the water situation. Casco Township, we told them, we will not use none of our general funds for our water main from the intersection of county line and East City Highway down there, that is something, whether St. Clair County Board of Commissioners are willing to do that, or if Great Lakes Trucking gets with the other property owners to do that, but it will not be on the back of Casco Township. So they got those, um, those, plus they have to have a viable site plan, them are three things, and they would have eighteen months to fulfill those. If that didn't happen eighteen months, it goes away and the zoning goes back. However, it would come before the Township Board to officially rezon. On rezoning, the Plan Commission only can make recommendations of, to rezon area, it's the Township Board that makes it official. So.
And they wanted it rezoned to industrial?
Yes.
That's unconscious, that's like two steps.
Right, so, um, so, but there's a lot of questions and, um, the meeting, how would you describe this?
It was intense.
Yeah.
So where?
The Great Lakes crossed, the Great Lakes guy was more intense than anybody. He looked good.
When you're on county line, you're on the fire.
Well, I know, I know where the place is, I've been by there, but where is the issue? I mean, it, there's no recommendation or is there a recommendation?
Okay, no.
Coming to the board to prove or not to prove?
They're, they, it was, our chairman, Pete Teltow, he asked them, would you like to postpone it for the time being? So they're, um, so that's what they want, you could postpone it.
So the eighteen-month, uh, timeline hasn't gotten that at all?
No, no.
It only begins when they submit a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, well, yeah, we would, the Plan Commission would have to make, um, recommendations to approve it, it would come before us, we would vote on it, then give eighteen months.
So after we vote on it, it would be eighteen months.
Yeah, exactly, so then, I'm sorry, I didn't. So then you'd have two trucking companies right there coming out on the county line, right? Isn't Ponzi right there too?
Yeah, Ponzi.
Yeah, Ponzi, though, they're, they're not trucking, they're a contractor. Well, I mean, they have, they have.
Trucks coming out, don't they?
But Great Lakes Trucking would have more trucks.
A lot of trucks.
Forty to two hundred.
And, and they're, they were saying, they were saying fifteen. And, and, you know, and then somebody brought up the fact, okay, how can, because they, they showed us pictures of this whole building site and somebody said, well.
It was pretty, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was beautiful.
Well, they're, they're big, they're dominant.
But then, but then it's, how can you support that building with ten to fifteen trucks?
Yeah, so you know it's not going to be ten to fifteen.
Actually, like, the thing that people should have spoke about was not really the traffic, because I don't think they can really do anything about the traffic, but if you live right there, your property value is gonna go down, you're, you're gonna have a banging and hanging from all the trailers backing up, you're gonna have all the lights all night long.
Well, that's the thing, under, we have, um.
There were, yeah, you were here.
They have, um, performance requirements where the legs you use shine only on your properties and stuff, there, and they have a, a ten-acre piece on the east side of the property that they're planning to use vacant, they keep it as like a green strip between the ag area, the east, and their operation. But the, the, the big thing is the traffic control, right there at the base of the.
Yeah, yeah.
But also, it's not just the parcel that they're looking to have rezoned, it's the whole zoning district there, that goes from industrial to, from commercial and office to industrial.
Well, from that.
And so there's the question, please, as I see, all of these medical facilities that are just, there's a real method of medical facilities right down the street, so this really, if it was industrial, then the opportunity to build commercial and professional office buildings that would service the folks that work there may not be as survivable.
No, we have, we have that area right there at the corner of Marine City Highway and, um, county line, we had a, a representative of the person, the loans, the holding group come, a couple of months ago, we talked to them, they plan to do office space someday in the future. That particular property, how it is situated, especially with the gas made through it, limits its viability to do office space.
To what extent?
This, this Great Lakes.
What are the?
Okay, I, I would.
I don't know yet, I don't know if you know.
Okay, no.
Are you talking about the Great Lakes?
Yeah, so.
And it's not, it's not just the Great Lakes parcel, the whole, the whole zoning area would be, would be none industrial, not just industrial, but the rest of it, so you might see all other kinds of, of the industry in that area.
Right across the street.
Yeah, exactly.
In Ira, they're all office spaces right across the street.
Let, let me speak on this one.
Okay.
I don't think we should be speaking on this one, it's the problem.
It's important to understand the implications and the ramifications that's gonna happen.
At this point, we should be speaking about this at a public meeting, we have not been given the information as a board, and I don't think we should be talking about this at all.
A lot of this information, if he's able to, I can invite Steve Cassidy in January to meet me, and he could explain the difference, um.
I'm gonna wait till they come to the Township Board, they can explain it to me here. That's, we get the final decision. And up, up until then, it's all conjecture.
Well, I was, I was told, well, it was nice, I felt like a proud parent, that the Plan Commission handled themselves in a very professional manner. I could not be here, the only one on the board, it was recommended by a legal, but Janice, since she's the board representative of the Plan Commission, Jennifer, myself, Dad, or Colleen, we're advised to stay away because we have to make that decision later. So, um, yeah, so we'll wait and see, this is gonna be, if this goes forward, it'll be the biggest, um, development since, uh, right across ninety-four, the trailer park in the early seventies. So, yeah, they, they got some. Yeah, they got some, um, big hurdles and stuff, they have to deal with McComb County and that stuff, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we're up to a German.
I make a motion to a German.
Okay, we have a motion, any support? Okay, we have support, all in favor?
Aye.